Good.
Okay, well, everyone, I called our regular meeting, March 12th in order. We have a roll call. Diane?
Present.
Marv?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Vern?
Here.
And I'm here, we're all here. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? In that case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is approved. May I have a motion to approve the February 12th, 2025 minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion?
I had a couple of comments, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not going to argue with the toned down minutes, but in each of the three discussions, the GD subdivision and the two amendments, I think it would be appropriate to reflect whether there were any public comments. It's not the same as, we don't have to discuss them at all, but I thought in the spirit of table of contents, might somebody want to go and listen to the audio? It'd be useful to just include whether there were any or not. So that was an addition that I thought would be useful for a potential user of the minutes. And then I thought the entry under the residential zoning was obscure. I don't, I may have trouble bringing it up in front of me, but if you read the entry there, it was not clear to me what it meant. So those are my feedback, not necessarily objections to what is said, but more small omissions that I thought might be usefully rectified.
Okay, well, those thoughts sound substantially made, and perhaps Joe can incorporate those suggestions.
Sure, yeah, unless there's somebody who feels differently about it, that would be absolutely right.
My sense is no one's feeling differently about it.
No.
Okay, in that case, all in favor of approval of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Sclosures, conflicts of interest, Vern?
None.
Diane?
None.
Marv?
None.
Marv, none, and I have none either. In that case, we'll move to our first public application, heirloom energy conditional use. CU-0125, David?
Hey, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We received an application from Heirloom Energy, Inc. to do a temporary pilot project to test heirloom energy device. What this is, is I don't know if you looked at the picture, but it's like a wind powered roller coaster is what they described. Basically, it catches the wind and it runs this device around a track and then it hits some generators to create energy. And obviously, after I get done with this, if you'd like to hear more about that from the experts, you can, heirloom team's behind me here. So the owner of the property that this device will be on is Overland Flyer LLC. And this, if you didn't look at the maps, this is north of Rock River, kind of north, east of Rock River. And I did want to note, well, access to the property is going to be from Highway 30, and then all across the Overland Flyer property to back away from the road where the project will be. I did want to note that the stranded property uses are not a mix of commercial and residential uses, as my staff report notes. I think that was a leftover from a different report. It's all ag around there. So everything is ag, and the nearest residences are about a foot or two mile away. So this was sent out for review by a number of folks. We received some comments back. The county engineer noted that if they ever use, decide to use Fetterman Road to get to that property, which I've been out there, it seems unlikely that they'll do that, and they would need to get a, yeah, they'd need to get a road use agreement, but where they're planning just to come off of the highway and cross the landowner property, and it's already going to have a project on it. I don't see that happening, but if it does, he wanted that noted. Let's see, Conservation District made their kind of comments about quickly reseeding and paying attention to wind erosion and disturbance of ground and making sure that, to minimize any problems there, or to minimize any spread of invasive species. The Wyoming Department of Transportation, they reviewed this. If, or with the use of this access, they'll probably require a change of use permit, so the applicant will need to work with YDOT to get that permit. And then Game and Fish had a number of comments on this surrounding, there's some pronghorn crucial winter range that's in the area. And it really sounds like that Wyoming Game and Fish would like to work with Heirloom on this project. I believe Heirloom will, that's one of the, one of the things that they're going to be looking at when they do this test project is what kind of impacts it may or may not have on wildlife. So, yeah. And just to do my, go through my analysis real quick. Just a second. From the application information and the reviews that I received back, the applicant has addressed the impacts associated with the proposed use, and has addressed the acquired findings for a conditional use application, the temporary nature of the project, and its location away from residential and commercial uses really mitigates most of the nuisance type things that, you know, air quality, or any of that, or noise. And really, there's not, you know, if there's air quality issues, they would go through and get a permit from DEQ for that. So all that's really mitigated just by the location of the project. And occupied structures are nearly a mile from the proposed site, so that will mitigate any noise or anything from, you know, causing the problems there. Areas that should be considered by the applicant include, obviously, Wyoming Department of Transportation's requirements for a permit to change the use of that access. And then, you know, if they do decide to use a county road, they would need to contact the county and get a road use agreement signed. And then wildlife habitat is not impacted, or is not an impact that requires mitigation for conditional use requirements, you know, we should recommend that they obviously work with Game and Fish to mitigate any issues that may be on site right now. So with that, the staff recommendation is to approve the Heirloom Energy Conditional Use Application, adopting incorporated staff analysis, findings of fact, and conclusions of law, as each are stated in this report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me, and then the applicant is obviously here to answer further questions, or explain this device a little bit better than I did.
Okay, questions for staff again, Mr. Ben David?
Yeah, so my question is, does also have a geological power planned for the site?
It's already been permitted.
Okay, that one is already, okay. Is that the one we talked about before? No. Okay. And then my question is, is the construction period, it's at four to six months, am I correct?
Good question for the applicant. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, and so, and you're planning, obviously, on building it in the summer?
You're starting in the summer.
Yeah, so it's not likely to impact the winter range of the pronghorn. How tall is the structure?
Are they female, right?
No, it's going to be closer to 45 feet is all.
Is it possible to?
Well, let's save questions for the applicant.
Okay.
For now, let's go through staff. Do you have anything else for David? I don't. Marv?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gerch, just a couple of questions. So when you issue a conditional use permit, it stays with the land?
Correct.
And the use. So what would limit this being just a temporary thing that couldn't be turned into a long-term thing?
I mean, that's what's been applied for, is a period of two years. If you want, you can put that as a condition that it be done in 24 months.
So the same applies for like, the construction too, is like, they can't, I don't think they want to, but for due diligence, they can't change their minds and do like a conventional tall windmill?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so it's a two-year, a two-year period?
Yeah, I mean, everything in the application is what they're committing to.
Right.
And if we approve the application, the staff report, they're committing to what they've said in them.
So, thank you. I have, who else?
Mr. Bruning?
Not for staff.
Mr. Hinckley? It's Vern vanished. He's muted.
Okay, here we go, got it, got it. Question for Mr. Gerch. When you say, "we should recommend," as you did a moment ago, with respect to the Game and Fish lengthy comments, what does that mean jurisdictionally? Does that, does that mean they can say, "Yeah, thanks, no thanks," or does that mean you're required to do it? I just, I'm always goosey about words like "should," or "might," or "we recommend," so.
Well, where it's not something that we can require, I mean, it would be an ask draw from us, and whether they did it would be up to them.
So that if we took your suggestion and recommended it, that has no legal bearing at all on whether they do it?
Right, right.
Okay, okay. So then explore with us a little bit about where does Game and Fish fit into this, purely recommendations, and we're talking kind of PR and good faith. Are there any opportunities for the county to require any of the things that Game and Fish recommended?
So, I mean, this is a discussion we've had before. The Game and Fish are provided a copy of the application. They provide us recommendations, but there's nothing in our conditional use application process, as spelled out in our zoning resolution, to require anything that they say unless it can tie back to one of the findings, or, you know, the impacts that are already in here. So at this point, I mean, we take it, we pass it on to the applicant, and hope they, you know, follow those recommendations. As you may also recall, this is a change that has been proposed, has been included in amendments to the conditional use regulations, and has been put out for, notice has been put out, and a public hearing has been set to adopt those. So at that point, if the committee, the planning, or the Board of County Commissioners adopt those amendments, then we could require what, you know, the recommendations of the Game and Fish to protect wildlife habitat. But at this point, it's, we don't have that, so.
Okay, no, that was my understanding. Thank you for that. And one additional question, Mr. Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
The other thing caught my eye was reclamation, and it was something that was recommended by Game and Fish, and is an obvious concern, and speaks to Commissioner Hannings' question about the temporary nature of the creation. The fact that it is experimental, that this whole company is experimental, raises the possibility, and I'm not trying to cast aspersions at all, that we not end up with a big pile of junk out there on the prairie. Is there anything that we can do with respect to a review of this application that obligates some level of reclamation? Or is that assumed because it's two years that you've got to clean up after yourself, and there's nothing about that in their lease with the landowner that I can see? So can you share with us any thoughts on reclamation?
Okay, so, I mean, if, if, you know, they completed their project, they left all their stuff out there, and it became derelict, then it may, may fit the nuisance stuff that we could do something about it? I mean, what's that?
DEQ.
DEQ could do something, or?
Yeah. Their land quality division.
So, okay, yeah, if there's anything that violates land quality, the DEQ could get involved. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's anything specifically in our conditional use regulations that addresses that, unfortunately.
Okay, well, that was my question. So I guess I'm hearing a no to any jurisdiction we might have with respect to reclamation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Very good.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
The fact that it's in the application that they will do it makes it binding, doesn't it?
Well, they should, yeah, absolutely.
It is there. Native plant species, particularly grasses seeded spilical ecosystem, will be planted. That's in the application. So that's a commitment, right?
I mean, they are committed to do that, yeah. If they did, if they go back on that, I guess that'd be something that we enforce because it's an application. Yeah.
Yeah, so it is.
Okay, yeah. Good point.
There's also an obligation of the lease.
In that case, let's hear from the applicant. It looks like we got an applicant somewhere back there. Please step forward and tell us your name and where you're from.
Great, my name is Neil Richtner. I'm the CEO of Heirloom Energy. I came in from California. Most of my team is here in Laramie. Our building is out by the airport. Welcome your visit. If you happen to be out that way, going to the airport or dropping somebody off, come visit. So I'll just take two or three minutes to introduce the company and what we're up to, and then just sort of love to address the questions and concerns. And just to say it out loud for everybody, that reclamation is in our lease that we sign, so it's also an obligation of that document as well. But, so to give you a bit on what we're trying to do here, Heirloom is building a new kind of wind turbine. If you've seen the pictures, it produces wind, energy from the wind, just like a traditional or three-laded wind turbine does, but it does it in a very different manner. The reason we're doing this is that horizontal axis wind turbines, or three-laded wind turbines, are not coming down in cost anymore. They had been for a long time, but those costs have pretty much leveled out. And the reason is because we've sort of painted ourselves into an engineering corner that is heavy industrial. And what Heirloom is doing is coming back to sort of Model T industrialization, we like to say, getting things that are more human scale, that can be mass-produced, and don't have such a big impact on visual sightlines, things that can be recycled, for example. So in contrast, I'll do it this way. GE will spend about a half a billion dollars to make their current wind turbine just a little bit bigger, because that's primarily how they've driven cost out of the system. They just keep getting bigger and bigger. But they'll only make a few hundred of that model before they move on to the next one. They'll make, they'll ship those parts in gigantic extendable bed trailers, as I'm sure you've seen on the highway, but with heavy lift equipment, and they'll also have to hire crews that are trained to work at exceptional height. Those, in contrast, Heirloom is building a turbine that is mass-manufacturable parts that are shippable in containers and put up with forklifts. And so you just change the dynamic of it. In addition to being less of a visual signature, think of it more like the visual signature of a transmission line as opposed to a skyscraper. Also, we won't have red flashing lights on the top, so at night you won't see it that we're there. Much less impact on county roads, because again, we're going to do, you know, containers on the back of semi-trucks that are many fewer, just given the scale, what we're deploying, it's just so different. And as I mentioned, most of our system is steel and aluminum that can be recycled, so you don't end up with pits of things that we don't know what to do with. The company was founded in 2015 by a husband and wife team, Robert and Blossom Lumley, from right here in Laramie, so we're homegrown. We got funding from the National Science Foundation. We got a Kickstarter grant. More recently, we closed on about 14 million of funding from big venture capital funders, Breakthrough Energy Ventures, Lower Carbon Capital, are two of the big, you know, multi-billion dollar funds. But in addition to that, we got Wyoming support, we're super grateful for. So the Wyoming Energy Authority has an energy matching funds. We've got a $5 million grant that's specifically for this pilot project that we're building, close to our headquarters. We also got a $1.25 million contract, government contract from the Air Force. So I'm a military veteran. My background, started my career as an F-18 pilot, then went to Google. I was at Google for about 10 years. And then because of my experience working on a wind energy device at Google and Google X, I was sort of a fit for this role here. The military is interested in this because it provides resilient power sort of behind the fence, if you will. Right now, military bases are reliant upon the external grid, the civilian grid, and what they found is that when that civilian grid goes down, they still need their sort of critical infrastructure to operate. So they're in the process now of all-in base generation of all sorts, you know, gas, but also wind, solar, geothermal, nuclear. The problem is that they get to that sort of wind device, and they say, "Well, I'd love to have wind as a part of that mix, but I can't put a 500-foot tower up near a military base for a bunch of reasons that are probably obvious." In addition to the military base use case, there's also the expeditionary one, which is, as a Marine, I was at forward operating bases that were primarily operated by diesel generators. If you could cut down on the amount of diesel fuel, you had to get forward to those bases by even 20% because you had wind and solar, or other options. The military sees that as forced protection. You have fewer troops exposed to threat. In the wars I was involved in, IEDs were the primary threat. Those IEDs were attacking convoys. Those convoys were carrying a lot of diesel fuel. So we've got a big mission here. As I said, we're here locally, just a few miles away from here, and this site is, you know, we went out looking across Southeast Wyoming, and we're really happy with this particular site because it has great wind, it's close to our headquarters, the landowner relationship's been amazing. And we did a review of, when we were aware of the potential environmental impacts, and as was mentioned, one of our, one of the things we really want to learn, we want to understand impact on bird, bat, terrestrial mammals, et cetera. And so we've avoided some of the highest sensitivity areas, but it would be, we won't learn anything if we don't have some wildlife around, right? So I think there's a key element there. Noise was brought up. We've done all of our estimates in-house. In fact, I like to talk, I like to brag about one of my engineers. He was, he built wind turbines back in the 90s. And then for the last 25 years or so, he's been building roller coasters for Disneyland and Universal, which is pretty unique. So he has a pretty good idea of what the noise profile is going to be, and we've used his knowledge on that. But look, we won't really know until we operate our system. If we end up in a place where it's noisier than we expect, we've got some mitigation measures. We can put sand in the, in the posts, for example. He's got a bunch of stuff that he's done in his career. But our estimate is that a mile away, you're not going to hear it. You'll hear it if you're standing right next to it. If you've ever been to Six Flags or Disneyland, you know those roller coasters are pretty noisy, but that's, it's the kind of noise that dissipates pretty quickly. So a mile away, especially a mile upwind, not likely to have much of a noise impact on the folks around it. But again, we're going to be learning. And as was said, I'll just finish on this point, which is, it's temporary, it's not connected to the grid. We have an obligation in a couple of ways to rehabilitate the site to make sure that, you know, when we leave, we leave it as we found it. So really appreciate the opportunity to be here and share our story, and welcome questions.
Well, thank you for that, Neil. Commission members, I will preface this by saying, we are here primarily to analyze the conditional use permit. This technology sounds fascinating, so it should be mostly pertaining to our mission, I think.
This is my question.
With that, let's start with something quickly. Do you have any questions? Maybe he's muted again. Vern?
Okay, yeah, I apologize if I missed the piece in the lease, and as you know, I'm on the road, and I may have missed that. So could you elaborate a bit on what your obligations to the landowner are by way of reclamation, just to follow up on that thread?
I brought my team with me, so how do you want to cover?
Yeah, the lease requires within six months of the end of our test period, which is three years total to construct and operate. We do have an option to extend it for two years, but it's not likely that the Heirloom team would extend for a five-year total term. But when we come to the end of that initial term, lease obligates that within six months, the device be taken down to at least 18 inches below grade, if there's any in-ground foundations, and reclaimed with native grasses to a similar state as before the project was constructed.
Yeah, thank you, that's, that's great. Most of the noise from roller coasters is probably screaming children. I don't suspect you'll have one.
Fair enough.
Yeah, that's the only, the only relevant question I had, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hanning?
Thank you for coming and presenting. It's a very interesting technology. I know my colleague here is very into alternative technologies. Would like to ask some questions. The only question that I have, somewhere in there I ran across that you might need to have a gas-powered generator out there at some point, and I just wondered, what provisions will you make to prevent accidental wildfire from generator use in a grassland area?
Yeah, Philip, do you want to talk to that?
Yeah, so part of, part of the site layout includes a lay-down yard and a parking area, new gravel, you know, typical dirt-type area. And the site layout puts that, it's a diesel generator, we're all familiar with, puts that within that boundary. And we're also, you know, going to have fire suppression built on a trailer, just because it makes good sense to do that.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ben David?
Thank you. Just to alert you guys, I'm a wildlife biologist. My interest in this may be a little further than what the Wyoming Game and Fish alerted to. And they talked about the pronghorn, and luckily, the site you selected is outside of the sage grouse breeding area, blacking area, so that's great. But we do have a lot of, and actually, I'm excited to see your project, and would really like to see you utilize students and the Game and Fish to investigate different aspects of this on insects and birds. For example, something that Will Schultz didn't even mention is that your design seems like it will create a lot of perching for raptors, so golden eagles and so on and so forth. So it will be really interesting to see if that impacts the small mammal community around your area. I would highly recommend doing a lot of these studies to be upfront when you go commercial. Another thing is coloration. I don't know if you're aware that the main reduction in energy production from the wind turbines is the fact that they're painted white. White attracts a lot of insects, and when the insects slam against the blades, they actually, the surface is not smooth anymore, and a 20% reduction in efficiency over time. So again, things like that would be nice. We have a lot of experts in the University of Wyoming that work on issues like this, and I would highly recommend talking to them. A question for you is, so that was added to the recommendation of the staff, to work with Game and Fish would be my recommendation to work with the university and our investigators. But a question I do have, and that might be something to think about for implementation later, can these be put in already existing wind farms? Is this, in terms of height, in terms of the spacing it needs?
Yeah.
Because the turbines are not close to each other. Is there a way to stick those in between and increase, and then you have access to the grid too?
Yeah, technically, yes. There's a bunch of reasons why it would make sense to do that. The height of our, the top of our turbine is going to be the bottom of theirs, for example. And as you said, I'm a pilot, I talk with my hand, so they put the turbines like this, and there's a bunch of space in between, for example. The challenge is going to be more commercial and sort of legal in terms of like who's going to assume the liability for a new kind of technology coming onto a project that was financed for a 20-year life, and, you know, you're injecting a new technology into the mix. So we're excited to explore those opportunities. In the near term, we're not likely to do that until we can prove the independent viability of the system. And I would say, longer term, this technology has the potential to be the lowest cost of energy from a wind perspective, and from a wind perspective, and maybe from more than just wind, could be of any source of generation. You may never see another, if we're successful, you won't see three blade wind turbines built again. That doesn't obviate your question, which is in the, in the meantime, could you add these to existing sites? Technically, yes. I'm just a little bit cautious that, you know, for, you know, hundreds of millions of dollar projects, you get lots of heavy hands that prevent additional risk being layered on. So it'll be hard from a commercial standpoint, but technically it makes a ton of sense, yeah.
And environmentally?
Yeah, so that's a, thank you. We have also, we've had some really interesting conversations about when three glated wind turbines get end of life and they get pulled down, what you, you know, you would add heirloom to in a repower scenario, which is just to say, use all the electrical collection that's already there. Use the, the sort of land that's already been permitted for this sort of activity. But instead of putting up another three bladed turbine, put up an heirloom that has all the benefits of an heirloom device.
And one last question, if I may.
Go ahead.
Can this be scaled down?
Yes.
So City of Laramie wants to generate its own electricity. Does it want to rely only on solo? Can this replace like a City of Laramie, 30,000 people type of?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's one of the real advantages of this system is that it's scalable. So a small system for us might just be shorter. If we want to go more megawatts, it's just longer. So it's the same wing and rail and post. All of that's the same. For the military application I mentioned before, that gets put in a container and shipped to a Ford operating base, that could be really small. That could be 10 or 20 or 50 kilowatts, for example. For the most part, and this is sort of tied back to economics again, the reason we're going for megawatt scale, utility scale, if you will, is because that's what the investors are really interested in because that's, they see the, the big market is that big utility scale wind market. But once you've got that, there's a lot of advantages to this system to building, not just a small version of it, but think about a system that put, that's on a floating barge that could be used in disaster relief scenarios. Or just put in the ocean as an offshore wind device. So there's, there's flexibility there. And I think we're really excited about the potential for us to be, build bigger and smaller systems, purpose built for different scenarios.
Thank you.
Ms. Kornick?
I was going to ask about the scalability too. Is this a megawatt size?
It's not likely to be. We started out with the ambition to make it that big, but, you know, 14 million sounds like a lot. We've spent much of that on the design and now it really comes down to how much money we have left to buy steel and to actually build the system. This is going to be a few hundred kilowatts at the end of the day. So a little smaller than our ambition, but, but still meaningful enough.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good. And then I'm, I'm looking at the figures and the dark rectangles in there. What are those?
I'm not sure which diagram you're looking at.
Take figure two, the estimated dimensions.
They're small, little black.
Yeah, the small, little black rectangle.
Yeah, they're the converter cabinets. And so there'll be four generators up on the rail. And then electrically, two of the generators will come down to each converter cabinet. So they'll be on a concrete pad and then it'll be like a small shipping container, which will then bring the energy from the generators. And then we have to convert it to a different voltage to be able to feed it into the load banks where the energy will be measured and then dissipated as heat.
Uh, that was my other question is where are the load banks? Where, where are you measuring the energy on this?
It's on the same path.
The load banks will be right on those same paths, attached. They're basically bolted to the side of the container. Yeah.
Right. Well, it looks very cool to me.
Would you like to ask any other questions?
No, thank you.
We haven't used too much time.
Well, I am, I'm concerned about the wildlife too. I guess that is another question is, would you be, like, if you just found out that songbirds are just being slaughtered by these wings going around, would you be? What would you do in that scenario?
Well, that's a, I mean, first, I would, I, I think all of us are motivated to do something just be, just because. But in addition to that, there's a commercial reason for this. I think you alluded to it, that we, we have, we get this question all the time from our investors, from our potential partners. We have to know what the impacts are. And if there are impacts, what mitigations work? So I would, I'd start with, there are mitigation measures. And we would just begin implementing and see what works, right? I, I can, I, I could imagine that you, we could put up devices in proximity to the turbine to, to divert flight paths away. There might be sonic or visual or other mitigations that, that might, might help. That said, you know, I, I, I will say we've got our initial, our initial assessment so that it's not going to go down that path for a bunch of reasons. I mean, for example, the reason it's noisy, and the noise in this case probably helps, is because those wings are actually moving pretty fast.
Yeah, it's at 90 miles an hour. Yeah.
Right. So generally speaking, from, you know, from my experience in the wind industry, the, the, the challenge comes when the blade smoots up on or somehow not, not in a sort of visible or ob, obvious place. And I think we're going to be much more obvious, at least at, at our height. I think you get up to, you know, migratory bird level, we're not going to be up there. So you don't have to worry about that. So what I can say is that like our initial assessments are that we aren't going to have those issues. We are prepared to take mitigations and incentivized for a bunch of reasons.
Okay, so it's an experiment. You're going to be nimble enough to change things if you need to.
Yeah, we need to be. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good. I have something else, but I lost it. But anyway, yeah, it does sound like a very, very cool project.
Yeah, I mean, I'll extend the invitation again. If you think of another question another time, we really are just at the airport and we're, we're close by and open. I mean, we're here, being open about the idea that we're here, we're going to, this project will be a learning experience on a number of levels. How much power do we produce? What does it cost? What are our impacts? So we plan to, and this was alluded to before, but the relationship with game and fish is real. And that's, again, we're motivated to build a relationship, maintain that relationship, learn from them, and ensure that we're applying what we learned from them. We, the, the question about fire came up, actually, we're,
Oh, that was my question.
We're going to invite the fire department up to make sure they know where we are and what we're doing. Make sure we have their, their recommendations for us. And then we've implemented those recommendations. You know, Philip talked about how we've got some of that already planned. And that's across the board. And we're going to do a groundbreaking. We'll make that open so that if you're interested in doing that groundbreaking, probably May-ish timeframe as we start construction, assuming that we have everything lined up and are ready to go, then. So anyway, I just express an openness that if you have additional questions, we welcome.
I guess my, yeah, my question was, will there be somebody on site when it's operating all the time?
Sorry, Philip?
Yeah. So if there is a fire spark or something, somebody will be there. And, okay, that sounds good. That's, that's all my questions.
Well, at this point, have y'all, be able to prove a cost estimate for how much you'll cost Bruce energy? Or is this the, the primary purpose is to actually figure out how efficiently or cheaply you'll be able to reduce?
We.
Energy or whatever.
Yeah, we, we have a really good idea of what the cost is going to be. I'll, I'll say it this way. This is not the most complicated robot I've ever built. And think of it like a robot. It's, it's wings that have to have some pretty simple articulation that are going in a uniform direction, all connected to each other. It's not a very hard controls problem, if you will. So when I talk to investors, what I say to them is like, I'm sure we're going to build something that works. The question is, can I build it without cost of? And we've done a bunch of work to understand what that, that cost needs to be. And as an example, a similarly sized roller coaster, what we're building would be a $10 million project. And what we're going to build is going to be in the neighborhood of like three or four million. And, okay, well, be, to be commercially viable, we got to get even lower than that. There's a bunch of low hanging fruit there. A roller coaster is a one-off project and we're going to be doing automated mass manufacturing. Also, a roller coaster is, is burned. So it's like screaming kids. It has to be human safe. So there's a bunch of things that are maybe low hanging fruit. Ultimately though, just, I think what you're asking maybe is, you know, my comment about this system in particular was a bit more, we, we just figured out that we could make a smaller system and still learn what we needed to learn. The key things that we have to prove out are how much energy does the system produce at this scale? Then once we've built it, how, what did it cost? And how do we get the cost all the way down to where we need it to be at volume? And then third is, do we have a customer that's interested? We already have customers interested, so that part's good. It's the first two that we're really working on. So I guess my comment, to explain my comment a bit further, we, we recognize that we could put more of our resources into the design and we were just going to build a smaller system because we still could prove that technology at the scale we needed. And, and honestly, it was just building this one-off system was a bit more expensive than we expected.
Okay. Any other questions for that then?
Hope that was.
Well, thank you very much for that. So I believe we're supposed to have a public hearing. Are there any members of the public which, which make comments? I don't see any online. See, what reason they're hiding in the back. Very well, I may have motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
So second, any further discussion? Paul is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There is. So discussion among the commission. Ms. Kornick, would you like to go first?
I think my questions were answered. I, I mean, I do have concerns about the wildlife stuff, but so do they. And you have to try it to find out. So as long as they're willing to change course, not go for six months with something bad happening, I think I'm okay with it.
Mr. Hankley?
Um, no, I'm, I'm encouraged. I mean, I love the idea. Let's, let's use the opportunity to experiment, learn something new and see where it goes.
Ms. David?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I like it. Again, I'll be happy to help with any connection at the university.
Ms. Hanning?
I agree with my colleagues.
Yeah. Well, for myself, I'll note this is a relatively small footprint. I'm prepared to sell it at the size of Albany County. It's temporary nature and I favor this. So with that, would anyone like to make a motion?
There we go.
Owned it?
Yes, I move that we recommend the Board of County Commissioners approve the heirloom energy conditional use application CU0125, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any further discussion? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, so we, Mr. Gertz talked about recommending that we, is it an option to condition this for cooperation with fishing game on all the things that are in fishing game's letter? Is that worthwhile? I mean, I know it's in everything and it doesn't seem like a high risk thing, but is it worth?
Not until.
I mean, it's not a, it's not a impact that's listed in the regulations, so.
So just under the general, the general welfare of the county and how much wildlife is valued in our, in our Albany County comprehensive plan, there, you don't see a direct link to general welfare in there. Okay, thank you. And I have nothing else.
In that case, we will conduct a vote. Mr. Hankley?
Aye.
Ms. Kornick?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Ms. David?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You all are free to leave or stay as you like. Believe it, we'll be riveting here. No, thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to, I believe, citizen comments. I don't see any citizens here. So we will move on to current planning projects, ranchette zoning.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we updated the map as was directed by you guys for the ranchette parcels. And we overlaid it, or, yeah, overlaid it with those areas that have a conservation easement. And there's four of the 904 ranchette zone parcels have a conservation easement on it that are over, I mean, these parcels are all over 35 acres. And basically that's what the map shows and that's what I was, what we were asked to do. So. I don't show you that.
Well, I believe we had left this in the hands of Vern. Vern, do you have any comments here?
It's just, it's fascinating and I'm sure that every single dot on this map has a long backstory. So first of all, thanks to the GIS guys. I mean, this is wonderful to have the resources that they, they seem to provide with such mastery. So thank you, Mr. Gertz and to your staff for, for helping us to understand this. I guess since we have Mr. Ayers back and, and welcome back, Mr. Ayers. Some of the questions that had come up is if one were wanting to pursue the idea of moving some of these previously zoned rural residential parcels into agricultural zoning, what, how might one do that? And what we discussed previously was that those who have already committed themselves to a conservation easement, to have them zone rural residential seems kind of meaningless. So if, if you've had time to think about this at all, Mr. Ayers, what, any thoughts on might the county simply change the zoning of these to something more appropriate like agricultural? And what notice requirements and what legal obstacles might there be to that? One, for these that are already in conservation easements. And then two, the question that we were asking ourselves last time, for others that, that seem incompatible with the, with the comprehensive plan, for example. And we know came from this, this process of the initial zoning having nothing to do with the comprehensive plan, but rather being based on, on some aberrations in the tax status. So again, that's, that's pretty wide open, but I'd invite Mr. Ayers to educate us a bit on how he thinks one might go about changing the status of, of these rural residential zonings.
Well, Mr. Chair. I guess a few preliminary points. After being gone five weeks, I have not had the leisurely opportunity to watch all of last month's meeting in full. So I'm a little behind on, on how this is all precipitating. But as to the notice and procedural requirements, that's easy. For the time being, if you were going to, or as the regulations exist right now, if you're going to change the zoning designation of individual parcels, which have largely different zoning restrictions, that's going to take an individualized zoning district amendment for each parcel.
And, and all of the notice requirements and time and everything else that goes with that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay. And, and if, if one were to, to go back and look at an individual parcel and find that it had gotten zoned rural residential completely by mistake, that, that in this complicated process of turning meets and bounds, text descriptions into a map, somebody made it section 32 and it should have been section 23, does that bear on that at all? Or is the fact that these maps have been produced that, that, that has become the zoning?
That's actually quite interesting, well, to me. So there is precedent, which I've come across,
So there is precedent, which I've come across where a mistake in in zoning or mistaken map doesn't really trigger that same kind of procedural due process protections, which might otherwise be there. And a mistake could be more easily fixed unless the resident has relied upon that zone. That's it's really when you get into like reliance, then you have much more of a substantive due process right which then triggers your procedural due process rights. So yeah, I guess if it was purely by mistake and absent some sort of vested interest of a current property owner in that I have seen or in that, you know, mistaken zoning designation, I have seen precedent that that mistake can be more easily rectified. However, there's also the the counterpoint that, well, we have a procedure to change it. This is what it's been listed as, so you still have to go through that zoning district amendment process.
Yeah, not not unexpected. And with your indulgence, Mr. Chair, one one more quite general question and and reassuring Mr. Ayers and all of us that this is a nothing that needs to happen in the next five minutes, five years, fifty years, perhaps. If the the county were to redo the comprehensive plan and, for example, decide that that it wanted to have two mile buffers around every live stream and there and then conform the zoning to that. How would that differ? And I guess I'm struggling with is, once you've done your initial zoning, how do you ever change it in in other than on a parcel by parcel basis?
Through the procedures that you prescribe.
And and the currently prescribed procedures would be one by one. Is that right?
So long as it is imposing different, so long as it's a zoning district which is imposing, I mean, you know, substantially different restrictions or allowances.
So so our comprehensive plan said, we we absolutely think that the whole county ought to be in ag with the exception of these four areas. We we could not then so zone without looking at each individual non-ag zone property and going through a individual zoning amendment.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that?
Okay, so let I begin to pose it as something extreme. If if we had a new comprehensive plan and we went through the whole process of of how that was developed, invented and approved, and it said, we think that the entire county should be zoned agricultural with the exception of, say, priority growth areas three and four. We could not then simply so zone the county without taking every single property that 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 changed and treating them as an individual parcel zoning amendment. Is that? Is that correct? How do you ever rezone the county?
Well, so there are currently amendments to zoning district that are before the commissioners. Which provides for a legislative versus adjudicative zoning district amendment process. Which is yeah.
Okay.
To be honest, I haven't heard of other counties. I know Park County just adapted a new conference plan, I mean.
I mean, I think they just follow the procedures and statutes. They thirty days before buying in zoning and forty five days with the before the Board of County Commissioners.
Well.
The notice and stuff.
For terms like implementation.
Of compliance?
Yeah, I mean, are they?
Well, that's when you update your zone.
They do parcel by parcel. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Park County may be in a position to to answer this is how will they conform their zoning to their comprehensive plan? And it just seems that there ought to be some kind of global way to do that, a legislative way to do that rather than administrative way to use the newly adopted language.
Yeah. No, that is that is correct. I mean, it's not a settled question under why I'm in law, but that's also not a completely novel legal theory. By any means.
Yeah, well, that was the the food for thought I was hoping to explore and and I'd welcome the opportunity to sit down with with Mr. Gurch and Mr. Ayers individually and and kind of educate ourselves on this as as we move forward. But yeah, I'm interested in just kind of the broad strokes. And I don't know if any of my colleagues share my concern, but when I look at the map that we're looking at right now, I mean, I see many of those little brown spots as kind of little little time bombs. If somebody came in tomorrow and said, hey, I want to put in a a two acre minimum lot, five acre average lot subdivision. And and I have the right to do that by right. And and the neighbors, I think, would just go ballistic and say, where on earth was the county and how did this ever happen? So that that's the the scenario down the road that I'm I'm wondering if we want to try to to head off in the spirit of planning. And maybe it'll just never happen, but but that's kind of the the thoughts in the back of my mind that that inform my curiosity here.
Any other comments?
I do have a question about the map. It says that the pink is those areas that intersect or touch easements. So the green is conservation easements. And then the pink are overlapping, but a lot of other dark brown thirty five acres and chat parcels that are touching those easements. And I don't understand how what's the distinction even within the Estorbook area? What's the distinction between the dark bread and the pink in that? Why not all the brown ones?
I mean, the I think the ones you're talking about is a thirty five plus. Those ones don't have conservation easements on them. So the pink ones have the conservation easement and they're on the thirty five acre more parcels.
Okay, so they already have a conservation easement and a zone unchecked.
Correct.
Okay, and the others are just unchecked.
Yeah, yeah.
But the green area is other easements.
Other conservation. Other conservation, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I I yeah.
Yeah, I think the green ones are just they're they're not ranch yet. It's not there, so he's showing those.
Okay.
And jury from our office put this map together, so anything goes to you.
Okay.
Well, with that, let's move on to item seven, future planning projects. I asked David to go down our list of long term projects and sort of address where they were, what priorities are as they stand today. See if you understood. That's what I asked.
But I'll let you know what we're working on. So we we are looking at continuing updates with the subdivision regulations. So we've been working with the county trees office and the county engineer to get get some of those standards updated. I'll mean a lot of especially the subdivision regulations. We've done some updating, but there's still some to go in it. You know, these were put together in like nineteen ninety seven and then kind of amended here and there, but there's there's some things we're working on there. Something also that is being worked on that won't impact this board necessarily is the wastewater regulations. That we're we're going to do a kind of a whole rewrite of those, make sure they were up to standards with what the state has. And then just clean up some of the very old language and that's in those because those were even older. I think the last up, I mean, we did some updates for the Cas Rock for we, you know, that and then then there, I think the last time that it was updated was in two thousand and seven. And so there's there's some really old stuff in there. So also, I mean, obviously, the the growth plan stuff, there may be a few things in there that we we were continue to work through. Haven't looked at that recently. But but that's something we've talked about and we can, we'll be working on that in the coming whenever we get to it. And then we've also, so one of the things that we're looking at is applying for a grant. This would have to do with the Cas Rock protection area. But we're we're potentially applying for a grant to do some planning or of how to develop a a monitoring program. And they've had some monitoring programs in the residential areas in the past. And we're I'm just discussing this with our grants person, so we don't know where it's going to go or how this is going to work or if this project will we be mustered to 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 apply for the grant, but we're looking into that. And then what else we got going on, Joe? We we did work do some work on updates to the land use table that Joe's worked on. So we'll circle back with that and see where there's something that that we can move forward to you guys. Trying to think. So so yeah, that's that's what I could think of off the top of my head here. I didn't know if you wanted to talk like ideas for new long term projects that you guys want to work on. So that's kind of where I was, my head was, so I didn't put together a a list. And then we've got the list that we made previously, I think, that I probably should update and bring back with the cap projects such so. Yeah, it's kind of make the go.
I guess that really combines with item eight staff updates. It's the same thing, essentially, what we just did. Anyone here have any comments or questions for David? Containing future projects, staff updates?
Uh, the question, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, and and maybe you said it, Mr. Gurch, but some months ago, we were invited to sit in on anticipate to some extent on the city's ground or monitoring program and and it's been complete silence since then. Has anything happened with that? Have there been meetings? Are there going to be meetings? What can you tell us about that? And perhaps Commissioner Hanning can help us there.
Yeah, I I don't know. I haven't heard anything since that meeting either. What has happened is Jay, that was the coordinator on the city side of things, took a new position at the city. And and so they hired a new new gentleman. Trying to think of his name here. I can't remember what his name is. Yeah, it'll come to me now that I'm when I'm not on put on the spot here or whatever, but he's only been in the position for weeks, maybe a few months now or whatever. I'm not really sure, but as to your question, I have no clue where that's at, so I haven't learned anything either, so.
Yeah, I I don't have anything I heard that I can report from the consultant side of that project and keep meaning to open up the files and see if anything's been happening there. But it does seem like a place to collaborate with the with the city on one unified one unified plan.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious. Yeah, because I I don't think theirs will touch on what what the plan that we're kind of thinking about will touch on. At least that was my understanding, but I could be wrong, so.
Are you trying to look at more at quantity of water than quality or?
Probably all of it, honestly. I mean, kind of the thought was is to look at the voluntary type data collection that they the city did in the past potentially. I don't know, like, that's where we're we're trying to figure out how can we fit into what's not, what hasn't been done? I know in the past, the city hasn't really wanted to go back into that area where they did that. And for for their reasons or whatever. So that's why I think that might be a missing piece.
Gotcha.
But not have not knowing exactly what they're what's being done at the city with this other plan. Maybe I'm maybe they are, but I I that wasn't my understanding at least, so. I'm sure things are going on. I'm sure the consultant's taking care of things. I I there just hasn't been any meetings or anything that I'm aware of, so. Unless I got kicked out, I said something wrong at the last meeting. But if so, Bern must have said some too.
Well, I do have something here. Entirely entirely aside from the growth area plan does seem to me prudent for us, the county to go ahead and write into our regulations or resolution something to plan for and allow for these right of ways where, you know, they they come into being or are necessary with regards to the major street plan. And for us to get ahead of that rather than be behind when some future applications come in and that's not provided for.
Sure. And yeah, we definitely agree with that and we have no problems with that. And I think we've touched, we've taken care of that in what we're drafting with the subdivision regulations. So the one area, though, to look into is potentially put it in our zoning as well. If we can, I'm not sure. I I hear this gasp over here. But the the problem is, is like with zoning, somebody brings in a a permit for a house. They don't have to look at where these proposed lines are. Nothing has to be provided on our zone certificate applications or business. There's nothing that in our our zoning resolution that would require like a delineation or a setback or or anything else, which I think we probably could do something like that. Yeah. That's that's somewhere that I've thought about. We probably should look at. But it is on our list, so I just haven't done anything with it yet.
Do my fellow commissioners agree that that's something we should attend to? Or should be attended to?
Sounds like yes.
Bern?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's all wrapped up with the Laramie Growth Plan, of course, which is a pretty heavy lift, but yeah.
Well, no, I'm talking about this is action which, again, entirely aside from the growth area plan, it makes sense we should address.
But do we have a major streets plan that extends outside the growth area?
Well, no, I'm talking about the plan as it exists and, you know, part of it does you know, fall outside of the growth area plan. Most of it's inside. Wherever it planned, wherever it falls. You know, we should be making plans for that. You have a lot for those streets to be built one day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that as a separate thing, but it's also recommendation that growth plans.
Well, in that case, take that as some direction. Talk about your free time with.
We can put that on the list for sure.
No, let's do that. Unless there's any objections. No, yeah, I think it'd be objections. Anything else with that? Staff updates? Anything else?
Staff updates. Laramie Growth Area intergovernmental agreement. We've kind of worked through some language and discussed that between county offices. The the city Public Works Department isn't The, the city Public Works Department isn't in a position where they can guarantee the extension of water to many properties, which is, is kind of the, that was kind of the big deal for the county, is to get some kind of an agreement that they would provide extraterrestrial extension to water and sewer, which we were basically told we can't, they can't, they can't do that. I mean, for, for, for reasons, I mean, obviously there's probably needs to be engineering and things that, that occurs to determine, you know, capacity and all those types of things. So with that, it leaves us with a intergovernmental agreement that doesn't do a whole lot. So that's, we're, we're still discussing these things. And we'll let you know where we end up, so.
Yeah, the city is facing a big budget cut with the passage of the property tax bill, so.
As is the county.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so we'll see how all that plays out, but.
It's going to be very difficult to commit to anything at this point.
Yeah. And then to update you, the regulations that you approved, that you were recommended for approval at your last meeting have been published. I think May 6th will be the public hearing for both those sets of, of regulations. We'll see how it goes.
Very good. Commissioner comments? Burn, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, sir, thank you.
How about the rest of y'all? I'm going to address the hips separately because I can't see them.
I'm making, I'm out here making faces at you.
Well, I'll make two comments then. Congratulations to Marla's Burn. I play Burn's daughter, graduating with a PhD, would that be right?
Yeah, no, she's off to become a faculty member at Notre Dame next fall.
Yeah. Well done to her, well done to you. You must be a good parent somewhere along the way.
Congratulations. Glad you're getting her back in the country.
Yes.
Let's also congratulate Matt on being back and for addition to his family. I understand things are going well now.
Yeah.
You've got a new son.
That's right.
So I hope you bring him up well. You maybe take lessons from Burn. All right, anything else?
I just wanted to say that the governor chose someone else for the game commission. Bill Mye, if anybody knows him, he was a VP for Finance at UW. He has absolutely no knowledge of wildlife, but though you haven't. So I'm here without any extra work.
Well, we're glad to have you here.
Have your undivided attention.
Exactly. Thank you.
Well, in that case, our next regular meeting will be April 5th, excuse me, April 9th, 5:00 PM here. And with that, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your patience with me being remote.
It was fine.